Yeah, just use your regular Bronxville email address and then that same password. Um, but if you're using one of the Chromebooks.
All right, sorry for the late start. I'd like to call the public session to order. Can we have a motion? Let's go. All right, we're called to order. Um, well, I'd like to welcome everyone back for our first regular board meeting of the year. Um, we've had a very, the board's had a very busy summer. We've had a couple of special meetings to try and move a few balls forward. And so I do want to thank all of the board members for all of the time they've put in over the summer. Um, and, um, so I'm very grateful for that. We've had some change here in the district, too. I'm grateful for, uh, for Joe and for Rakia and for Anthony and for Christine. And I'm sure I'm not remembering everyone, but stepping into new roles here in the district, we're all very excited about that. And we obviously, um, we've got some other new roles to talk about tonight on the agenda. So, um, I think we should just get, get down to business. Um, our first, uh, agenda item is a resolution regarding the appointment of an interim superintendent of schools. This is something we've all been, um, talking about and getting some diligence done on. Um, and so, um, we're very pleased, uh, to introduce a, a resolution to appoint Rachel Kelly as our interim superintendent, beginning January first, 2023, upon the very sad retirement of Roy Montesano. Um, so with that, I'd like to read the resolution and have a vote. Um, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Bronxville Union Free School District, uh, the Board herewith appoints, uh, Dr. Rachel Kelly as interim superintendent of schools effective January one, 2023, for a term to expire on June 30th, 2023, or until the commencement date of the employment with the school district of a permanent superintendent of schools. And be it further resolved that the Board herewith authorizes and approves the employment agreement between Dr. Rachel Kelly and the Board, which agreement has been previously reviewed by the Board. And be it further resolved that the President of the Board is herewith authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the Board. Um, may I have a motion to approve the agreement? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Kelly. We're, we're, we're very grateful, um, for your willingness to step into this role. And as we've said on a couple of occasions in our communications with the community, we're also, uh, very grateful for all the succession planning in the district. On, uh, your part, Dr. Kelly, and on Dr. Montesano's part. Um, we've made some great hires and done great development. And we're very fortunate this summer to be able to have so many, uh, promotions from within. So, uh, we are lucky indeed. Um, our second, the second item I have for consideration is a resolution to approve a supplemental agreement with our search firm, School Leadership. Um, again, as we've communicated, uh, we will be continuing our search for a permanent superintendent. We've, we've extended the search from last spring where we were fortunate to meet some excellent candidates. The Board has had some discussions and has, um, decided that we'd like to supplement the pool that we saw last spring with a pool, um, recruited on a more traditional timeline. Um, and so, uh, we have an agreement for consideration that contemplates, um, uh, a new, um, set of specifications, probably the same set of specifications. Um, but the search consultant will be meeting with each board member individually to, uh, review them. Uh, and then we, uh, we are hoping to have, um, a set of interviews around the November timeframe to meet more candidates as well as the candidates, again, that we had met with, certain candidates last spring. Um, we will consider applications, uh, up and through mid-January, and at which point we hope to, uh, come to a conclusion on a permanent superintendent for the district, uh, to begin July first, 2023. Um, are, is there any further discussion by the Board on that topic? Uh, unless there are any, if there's any further discussion or comments, I'll read the resolution for the approval of that agreement. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Bronxville Union Free School District herewith approves an agreement between the Board and School Leadership, 82 Linden Street, Melbourne, New York, to conduct a search for candidates for the position of superintendent of schools for the contract amount of $8,000 plus expenses. And be it further resolved that the Board authorizes, the Board President to sign any and all documents necessary to effectuate said agreement. May I have a motion to approve that agreement?
Motion.
Jen?
Jen.
Yeah, first.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, bit of housekeeping, uh, we will, we have a, a draft advertisement. Um, I don't know if people had a chance to review the language in the advertisement, but the idea was with our new timeline, in order that we can be, um, take advantage of the momentum of having had an early start last spring, that the search this fall be characterized as more of a rolling search. Um, and so, uh, I'd like to propose some slightly different language here, um, that applications will be considered as received through January 13th, 2023. Does that sound?
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Uh. January 13th.
Through January 13th, 2023, yeah. And a, and, uh, a draft of that ad is, uh, you know, posted in the agenda.
Yeah, I was looking at two ads. Uh, there was one word that was different. Uh, in the first line, it characterizes "school" as "highly regarded and progressive" in one ad. And then the next ad, it says "highly regarded and innovative." And "progressive" to me, the word, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on the way you look at it, I think that word is a kind of a lightning rod right now, especially because of what's going on in DC. I don't think it's the district. And I just wonder if we want to use that word in the first line of an advertisement that's going out.
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, the history of our school is characterized as a progressive school.
But I think the word is.
I think it works different a hundred years ago than it does now.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think the word itself is.
Has some baggage.
It's got some baggage, especially I would say over the last three to four years. And, um, I just put it up for discussion. I look at it. I don't think it's a positive, but it can just be mean.
No, I, I agree, Michael. I do. I think the innovative is a much, I think it's also more accurate to the school. I think the teaching seeks to be progressive, but I don't think it has the connotations that some might presume the way the word has taken on its meaning in the last few years. So I think, I think that is something, particularly in the first sentence, I think you're right.
I think we're right. Innovative is just a better.
Yeah.
More meaningful word to most people. Yeah, more descriptive, yeah, yeah. Um, I don't think we need to approve this yet. Uh, we're gonna, uh, once we've had our interviews with the, uh, search consultant, we'll have to approve the specs formally, and so we can approve the ad at that time, too. Um, but I just wanted to have a little bit of discussion about that tonight, so. A couple of other items before we approve the minutes, um, from July. Uh, the, um, we've had a little bit of discussion about, um, you know, um, communication is a priority this year and, uh, you know, working to continue to improve communications between the Board and the district to the community, in particular in the area of curriculum. Um, really glad to report that Mara's been working very hard with her team this summer and has, uh, put together some new curriculum timelines that'll be, uh, posted shortly to the website. So thank you for that, Mara. Um, but also, I think we had, um, I think we had interest expressed. I know Michael by you, this is important. Mickey and, um, Eddie, you were wanting to be involved in that effort, too. So, um, uh, we're fortunate to have a, a consultant in the district on PR, Jackie Burton. And, um, I think as a next step, uh, we'll get the three of you together with Jackie Burton to talk a little, um, about, um, maybe how to think strategically about communications this year because she's got some great best practices to share from other districts. And, um, one of the ideas that, um, Michael, I think you brought up when we were talking with Roy this summer about communications is maybe some kind of a survey.
Right.
And so I'd like, um, I think maybe Jackie could help us with drafting that survey.
Right.
So that'll be.
Right, because the concern is not just to do more communications, but to make sure the communications are effective.
Mm-hmm.
We want to be selective about that.
Yeah, and to try and save Roy and Rachel from saying the same thing at meeting after meeting.
Right, and everyone is inundated with communications anyways. We want to make sure it's meaningful.
Yeah.
Whatever we decide to accrete to what we're doing currently.
Yeah, yeah. Um, uh, another, um, priority that we've been talking about, and this was raised by Mickey, um, was the possibility of maybe doing, uh, talking more strategically about, um, the budget long-term. And, um, uh, you know, Mickey, um, asked the question, uh, has asked the question, you know, could we think about what would each of us like the district to look like in five years, 10 years, that kind of a question? And, um, we have long-term budget planning meetings already in place. We have the first one on October 3rd, so fairly early in the year. Um, and then I think we have another one in November.
Yeah.
Um, Roy, I think, very wisely asked for time for everyone to think about those questions before we dive into them. But, um, maybe in November, we might consider, um, I think those meetings are on a weekday currently. Um, we may possibly consider moving one to, uh, Saturday, having it be a longer session so that we have the time to, um, not only to cover, um, the details of the budget, but maybe to, for Mickey to facilitate that strategic discussion. So just something looking ahead to, to think about. And then finally, um, I just wanted to remind all of us about some of the really fun things planned for the centennial, the school's centennial celebration, which will be on September 24th, our homecoming weekend. Most of us who came in for the meeting wa, may have walked through the atrium where there's already a really interesting display of photographs of the history of the school. I did not know we had big floods in 1972 and 1979 as well, but it's definitely worth a visit. We'll also have, um, tours led by students. Um, there will be a alumni spotlight featuring Mary Kane and Liz Smith, two, um, more well-known or famous alums. And, uh, Mary Kane will be interviewed by another alum. Liz Smith will be interviewed by a, um, professional journalist named Sisal McCarthy. Um, and they will be speaking on their experiences here in Bronxville. Um, hopefully, they'll be also speaking about some favorite teachers and classes and, and experiences and how Bronxville has served them in their, uh, careers and, and futures. So we're looking forward to that. There'll be merch, of course. And, um, uh, Mr. Doyle of Bronco TV is putting together, um, uh, oral history, a database, and I think a film, too, if I'm not mistaken. So, um, and then there's an alma mater being composed?
Just being an alma mater being proposed. Uh, Rachel is the, uh, one who's making that connection. And I'm still challenging her to sing it at the homecoming game, but I haven't gotten there yet.
Pam Simpson, our choral director, six twelve, has been instrumental in, um, in creating the lyrics and composing this alma mater in honor of our centennial. Um, so we're just working out details when we want to launch it. Um, and I will not be singing it. I'll be singing along, but I will not be leading the crowd. But it, it will be ready for September? Okay, that's great. We weren't sure. But you do have to register for some of these events, so I hope we'll have good board representation, um, on that day. So, um, that, I believe, is all I had before we, um, have a motion to approve the minutes. Can we do them together, Connie?
They are both acceptable, yes.
Okay, are there any, uh, does anybody have any changes or questions, comments, revisions to the minutes? Um, so could we have a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting on July 19th and the reord meeting on July 7th?
Motion. Second?
Is it second?
Let's say Mike. Number one?
Mike.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Back to you, Roy.
Thank you. Um, at the risk of repeating some of what Susan Ari has spoken about, uh, just wanted to report we had a, our staff opening today. We had an opening meeting. It was terrific, I thought. A lot of positive energy. People came back happy, smiling, having great summers. You know, it really brought the building to life again for us. So it's always exciting to start the year. It's the best time, uh, being in education because you're gonna get to, you know, renew and, and recharge and get started up again. And there's a lot of excitement in the year. Uh, so it was a terrific opening. Classes are getting ready. Teachers are excited to see the kids. Uh, and it makes, it was a nice day. And, um, just a quick word about the changes that are going on in the district first. I want to congratulate Rachel. Um, she and I have had the opportunity to work side by side for the last five-plus years. It's been, uh, an honor for me and a privilege for me to get to, uh, know Rachel. And I have all the confidence in the world that she'll continue the tradition of excellence that, uh, is established here and, uh, help to, uh, grow the district to even greater heights. So, Rachel, congrats, and I look forward to seeing you lead the district. Um, and in terms of the other changes, you know, I know you mentioned to Susan, but it's so rewarding for, for me personally and for us, I think, as a leadership team, to see the promotions from within. We work real hard as a group together. Um, we have some terrific, terrific, talented educators. And to see them have the opportunity to take the next step in their leadership journey is really rewarding for all of us. It's a, you know, we have a wonderful team together. It's a close-knit group. I know they're going to support one another. And, uh, I am just thrilled for Rakia, Joe, Anthony, Christine, uh, to join the, uh, the team together. And, uh, and I'm really excited to see what they're going to do as well. So congratulations to you guys. I look forward to it. Um, along with the, the changes, and this is something I mentioned to the staff at the opening today. You know, Bronxville is built on Bronxville Promise right now. And that is something that guides us. It's our culture. It's embedded in the work that we do. So it's something that's going to transcend any leadership changes, transcend any changes administratively or through staffing. And it's really nice because you're not renewing everything again. You're building on it. And I think it's a real solid foundation that the district has. Um, and it's worth revisiting. So I've been going to spend some time this year revisiting the promise, maybe taking a deeper dive to see how it can be further enhanced, uh, to, to build the culture out even more. Uh, you mentioned the centennial, so I don't need to do that anymore. And just a quick shout out to Mara for those curriculum timelines. I know she's worked really, really hard with the staff to get those together. Um, it's not the easiest thing to do, pulling people in a room together and put down on paper what they're doing for the year. And Mara really did a wonderful job, so, uh, congratulations. I think, I think it'll be appreciated by the community as well, that you'll see the kind of work that gets done in our, in our classrooms. So, well done. We had our athletic competitions start today. I don't know how they did, Joe, when I was leaving, they were winning 2-0, so it was all good? Six to one. Six to one. Our boys soccer team had its first game today. We have field hockey, I know, tomorrow. Football, uh, tomorrow night, I believe. Uh, so we're off and running and, and it's, uh, it's a great part of fall. Um, and finally, I just wanted to bring up for the Board, uh, again, um, the notion of exploring the potential of having school resource officer, uh, in our schools. I was approached by Chief Satrally to see if there'd be interest, um, in sharing the expense of a school resource, resource officer, uh, for the Bronxville school. I know it's something that, uh, we'll have to have some discussion about. We'll have to get some more information about, you know, we do have a Director of Security in place now that does a lot of things for us. This would be slightly different than that, but we'd have to really clarify and, uh, see what the expectations would be, how the roles would be, and then, um, we'll come back to the decision and the recommendation. But I want to get it out there to let everyone know that it's something that's being discussed by the Board and something that'll be considered strongly by the Board, um, once we get all the fine details worked out.
And is this a, a topic that, that would be helpful for the Safety Committee to consider as well?
Yeah, I think it's a, certainly a role the Safety Committee can play in this. So we have our first meeting coming up.
In October.
In October, unfortunately. Uh, but, you know, perhaps we can reach out earlier than that to, uh, get people thinking about it, to share information about it. Uh, but I think it's worth a, a discussion at the Security Committee level, uh, Safety Team Committee level. Just to, to, you know, bounce off ideas and see if there's something else that, you know, perhaps we're missing that they might be aware of. So, yeah, certainly. Um, but that's it. I'm looking forward to the fall. Looking forward to the start of school and see all the kiddies on Tuesday. It's really the best part of the job that we have is seeing the kids come in. And, uh, it's gonna be a, a great year for us, so thank you, and, uh, I look forward to the final four months I have. Thanks, Roy.
Pass to you, Roy.
Thanks.
Remember you're ready.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Um, it is my pleasure to, um, put before you a number of personnel agenda items for you to consider this evening. Um, we did have an opportunity in executive, uh, session to discuss some of this. Um, so at the risk of redundancy and yet required, um, you will see the resolutions on this evening's Board Agenda for both Christine Dowd as our very first K through 12 Assistant Director of Special Education, as well as Anthony Vaglica, our new elementary school Assistant Principal. Um, in addition, you will see, uh, a few new hires, um, in terms of phys ed and middle school technology. A couple of, uh, teachers who qualify for leave. We have a revised list of both our curriculum leaders and team leaders. Um, and as a result of those two teacher leaves, we also have the leave replacements before you this evening. In addition, we had some, uh, teacher aide resignations, as well as teacher aide new hires, with a complete list of our teacher aides for the 22-23 school year, all, um, anticipated and budgeted. Uh, in addition, the approval of our lunch monitors. We have two in the elementary school. Our teacher residents in the elementary school. And then the complete list of our substitutes, teachers, teacher aides, clerical nurses, maintenance. Um, we also, uh, discussed in executive session, a side letter between the district and the BTA concerning mentoring. And that agreement is before you, uh, this evening have already, has, and has already been signed by the BTA leadership. Um, in addition, uh, we ask you to consider the hiring of a new physical therapist uh, based on, uh, our retiring physical therapist. And then we have some new coaches. You'll notice that some of them are not just for this fall season, but rather for later on in the year. We want to make sure that they were appointed early so they can begin their interactions with their student athletes. And, as well as a revised fall coaches roster. So I'm asking you to consider items A through double O this evening. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second, Michael?
Yeah.
And then the second?
Second.
Um, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
My turn. Um, there's no financial, uh, budget update this evening because we're, uh, trying to finalize the 2021-22 audit. That will be presented, uh, probably, um, August and, uh, July will be presented at the, uh, late September meeting. Um, and then, uh, the, the audit will be presented at the October meeting, hopefully. We do, however, have a couple of financial action items. Uh, the first concern, uh, concerns our transportation contract for interscholastic athletics and field trips. Extending that for another year, uh, at an allowable increase, uh, from the State Education Department of 6.3%, which we feel is very reasonable, given the rise in costs, uh, that the, um, contractors experiencing and also the fact that I doubt we would get any proposals if we went out to bid. Um, obviously, transportation has been a challenge for us for the last, uh, I guess, two years or so now. Um, I, I want, I want to make it very clear that this is not a financial problem. If money would solve this problem, it already would be solved. We would allocate the resources and would solve it. This is a more systemic issue, um, having to do with, um, uh, the labor market, the inability for schools like ourselves and, and many of our, uh, other, uh, school districts in the area to find enough drivers to get buses here before four o'clock. You know, I have constant conversations with, uh, Joe Haven regarding scheduling. You know, let's see if we can get, uh, more games on weekends. Let's see if we can get, uh, home games during the week. Um, let's see if we can get schools, play schools with lights, um, those kind of issues. Uh, we have, uh, this royal coach contract that I'm proposing to roll over. We also have a couple of backup contractors that we, uh, are going, going to go to. But there are going to be times when we, uh, this year, when we do not have the ability to get a bus from anybody. Um, and, and, you know, our, I can't say enough about our parents, how they've been, they've been helping us with this issue. And believe me, this is the last thing we want, ever want, is, if, we, we would prefer buses all of the time. Um, it, it raises a whole bunch of other issues, but unfortunately, we have no choice but to ask for help. Um, and if there was a, uh, if there was a blunt instrument we could use to solve this problem, we would, already would have done it. But we're trying to approach it from a, a number of different directions. Uh, and hopefully, it'll be a little better than last year, and we're, we're, we're angling towards a longer-term solution.
Does our budget assume, uh, sort of full costs for busing, like that we have?
We will make it work. And like I said, this isn't a financial issue. I, you know, I've been allocating, helping to allocate resources in the district for fifteen years. When we have a financial issue, we have expertise on the board, I've been doing this for a long time, Roy's been doing this for a long time. We can, we can address financial issues. This is not a financial issue. It's a systemic issue nationwide, really, and even more so regionally.
Dan, how does it work? Do they charge us by the hour or by the route?
It, it, it used to be by distance, but that was with the prior contractor, now it's really an hourly rate. Because, you know, distance kind of takes up the hourly time, so it works out better for the contractor that way, and they asked that we bid it that way, so we did.
And so when a bus, if they just can't provide a bus, we're not paying at all for it?
No, we, no.
Okay. Dan, is there, there's no way to partner with another school district that buses during the day? I know that's part of the problem that we have.
We've, we've asked all of the local, we've asked Eastchester, we've asked, you know, all the districts around us who have buses, they have the same issue in that they can't get extra drivers. They're struggling to get their kids home from school, the districts that have buses, so they're even experiencing, most of them are even experiencing the same problems we are. They have to wait for the last run to get back before they can send out an athletic run. And that, that, you know, that wouldn't do us any good. We can get as many royal coach buses as we want at four-thirty in the afternoon, we can't get them at three-thirty.
Okay.
So with that, I would ask that the board extend this contract as really the baseline for trying to tackle this issue this year. And I also have just a little housekeeping regarding the insurance renewal that we did at the July meeting. The cyber insurance that we had on that resolution was not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, it came in a little higher. So we're redoing the resolution that will authorize me to lock in the cyber insurance, which I have already locked in because I didn't want to be without it over the summer.
It's twenty-three, right?
Yep.
Can we do this separately or together? Together? Great. Could we have a motion to, for agenda items? A and B? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to facilities, summer cleaning is pretty much done. We are ready, and we're looking forward to having, you know, a lot of bodies. I think, two weeks ago, I was in here on a Friday afternoon, and I think I might have been the only person in the building. And, you know, this week, we got, parking lot was full today, you know. Con Ed did not get out in time, which caused a little bit of a wrinkle, but we allowed them to use our lot as a staging area for all the work that was going on on Midland Avenue. But they will be out by Tuesday, and we're looking forward to having a full complement of students, staff, and anybody else who belongs in the building. And again, thanks to Mike Lee, the maintenance staff, and the A and A contractors who really worked very hard this summer. We also had, this will go into committee reports, but a five-year plan meeting, which really serves to identify the priorities over the next five years for facilities that we file every five years with the State Education Department. There's some small projects that we've been talking about over time, but recently, there's been an identified issue with the envelope of the C wing, I'm sorry, the D wing, with brick and window issues and windows and some other areas that will probably be, need to be addressed over the course of the next five years. And that report will serve to prioritize any kind of facilities, issues that we want to address over those five years.
And when do we think they will be finished with that?
It should be ready for the facilities committee, probably within the next month and a half or so.
Oh, okay.
And then they're gonna present probably after the break to the full board.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
And while we're on that, does the facilities committee have anything else that they want to add to that?
Yeah, I would just add that we did have the opportunity, along with the architects, to meet with all the administrators, the building principals, I guess, and hear about what their wish list is, which was interesting to hear. So we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, I just want to add that the, the costs of things are gonna continue to rise most likely, and to be proactive, it's probably better to try and get this started now and get the numbers figured out and budget for it because it's, in my industry, we deal with this a lot, and it's, it's really getting bad, so better to be proactive.
Well, we will have some debt capacity becoming available, what, in like twenty, twenty-seven, eight?
Yeah, and in timing, anything we want to do, I think, probably wouldn't really get started or underway or at least concluded probably till twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. So that, that would push out servicing that debt if we want to, even a year or two beyond that, so we could probably match it with some other amortizing debt. You know, we can, we can talk about that at the workshops as well, you know, looking forward financially.
Also, ask the board to consider being aggressive with the reserve, the capital reserve as well.
Yeah.
Prepare for this.
And allocate the-
Whatever reserve you possibly can. And again, I know you're limited to, I think, only the year.
Only the year.
But I think if there is the availability of funds to do that, I would recommend the board strongly consider that over the next few years.
What limits us to the measure on the capital?
I'm sorry.
What limits us in a particular year to the money?
That, when the fund was set up, those were the parameters that the board had out. It's capped at ten million total and limited at a million dollars a year. You know, in hindsight, we probably should have gone a little higher, but it was established, you know, twelve years ago. Thank you. And then there's some other action items that the board needs to address. Really, this is kind of statutory, statutory bookkeeping stuff. The board is required to approve the building-level emergency response plan, which is, you know, kept in a binder in Roy's office, and has been welcome for the board to review over the last week, and fire drill, fire drill procedures for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, which was in the board's packet. And I think we could take those together, Connie?
Okay, so that's other action items, A and B.
Yes. Yeah, as there are no facilities action items, we're moving on to those two.
Were there any questions on those documents? Do we have a motion to?
Salute. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, one more set of recommendations for you to consider this evening. Annually, at this time of year, we put before the board all of our special education and 504, as well as our preschool special education recommendations. It's the responsibility of the board to approve those services so that they can begin with our students with disabilities come the first day of school. So you have before you all of the individuals by ID number, of course, and the recommendations that the committees, together with the parents, recommended. I know that many of you know this, special education is highly regulated, both by federal and state legislation. We take that responsibility very seriously, and you see before you, you know, the range of services that we're able to offer our students.
Rachel, since this is our first time through this, can you just remind us what are the various committees, who serves on those committees?
Sure.
And how they function to get to these recommendations?
Of course. So I could spend hours on this, but I could try not to. If anyone, if any educator or any parent suspects that a child has a disability, they can refer their child for a full evaluation here at any public school, so here. And that evaluation is multidisciplinary by our school psychologists, by special educators, perhaps a speech-language pathologist, occupational therapist, visible therapist. And we do a standard battery of assessments to help us determine if a student has a disability. And those test results are shared with the parents, and then the final step to the referral process is to have everyone together at a committee meeting. And the parents are there, and then all the team members are there. Our committees are typically chaired by our school psychologists, and again, anyone else who knows the child well is there, those who have evaluated the child in addition to the classroom teacher. And together, the committee determines whether or not a child has a disability, an educational disability. That could be a learning disability, a speech-language impairment, other health impairment, there are thirteen classifications. And if a child is found eligible, then it's the charge of the committee to also determine what services they're eligible for. Are they eligible for special education services? That could be resource room support, that can be consultant teacher, or it can be related services, speech, OTPT. As I said, parents are integral parts of that process. Sometimes children are not found eligible for special education, but they still may qualify for section 504 accommodations. Section 504 is based on the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-four. For those of you who are around them, that's when we started to see ramps on buildings. It's about equal access. So how that plays out in public school, it's equal access to program. So very often, in public schools, that will play out if a child has been diagnosed with an anxiety disorder or attention deficit, and they don't need special education intervention, but rather accommodations to put them on a level playing field among their non-disabled peers. So those are all considered around the table together with those team members, and that's how we come up with these. Similar process with preschoolers. The only difference there is that we don't actually evaluate preschoolers who are suspected of having disabilities, but rather there are approved evaluation sites throughout the county. But then we receive those evaluations, and we're charged with determining eligibility.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else you wanted to, so we approved these recommendations?
Yes, please.
Was there anything else you wanted to share? Or were there any questions? Okay, there's now further discussion. Do we have a motion to?
Salute. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think next is committee reports. I mean, I think we had an update on the facilities, and there were a couple meetings on curriculum too, right? Is there anything you wanted to share?
The main topic was the sharing of the curriculum timelines, which I think we're all excited about, and also a little bit of discussion on the new language tracking in the middle school.
Mm-hmm.
Where the students will get a little bit longer exposure to different languages before they make their decisions. And, was there anything else? No, I think that was pretty much it.
Thank you.
It feels that finance meeting, we, Dan talks, talked about some of the things we discussed, but we were looking at the fund balances and reserves, and maybe thinking about what they could be once the audit comes through and actually make the actual reserves. Once audit's done, we'll have recommendations, but, you know, that being said, if we are in good financial shape as they, you know, get close to the votes here, the last one's for you.
I think that concludes our agenda, is that right? And so we always have, always have time for public comment. I think we've come to that point in the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to speak or make a public comment? No. Thanks, thank you, everyone, for your attendance. We appreciate the engagement, and if there's no further business, then I think we'll just take a motion to adjourn. Do you get it, Connie?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hold on, Susan, there's good news.